Not good weather out there.
Oh, well, it's clearing up.
They said until five, so.
Yeah, you can see some blue sky out there.
Yeah.
That's positive.
Yes. Well, I have six o'clock, so we will go ahead and start our work meeting for February twentieth, twenty twenty-five. We have Debbie with us on Zoom, and I think Lisa will probably be coming in a little bit. We'll watch and see if she comes.
I've got, I'm sure, I've got, I need about five minutes.
Okay.
I need to read a letter and then talk about a couple of things that may have been overlooked or whatever. So this, this letter is concerning, you know, the items that we requested on the agenda that were, were not put on. So if you give me a few minutes, we'll read through this and.
Okay.
Planning Comis-, or excuse me, the, uh, city council is aware of this. So, dear council members, on Thursday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Mayor Bingham emailed a letter to Commissioner Prince informing that her, that effective immediately, she was placed on administrative leave from all actions and duties related to her role as the planning, as a planning commission member. This was a blatant abuse of Mayor's about, Mayor Bingham's power. Mayor Bingham had no authority to carry out this action. Commissioner Prince has not done any, anything to warrant this. In addition, the circumstances surrounding Mayor Bingham's actions and reasoning are a clear conflict of interest. If there was any question regarding Commissioner Prince's ability to perform her duties and to maintain a position on the planning commission, the decision on how to proceed should have rested squarely on the shoulders of the city council. On Monday, February seventeenth, Council, Councilman Hill and I emailed a list of items to be put on the agenda for the February twenty twenty-five city council meeting. We asked that these items be added to the agenda and posted by the end of the day on Tuesday, February eighteenth, in order to provide transparency and ample notice to the public. Included in these items was the subject of Commissioner Prince. The city's attorneys, city council members, and Mayor Bingham were all copied on this email. Mayor Bingham deliberately kept these items from being put on the agenda, which is a violation of Hooper City ordinances. I'm now sending this letter to each of the city council members individually. We will be discussing this in our work meeting tonight. This letter will serve as a, as the Hooper City Council's clear instruction that effective immediately, Commissioner Amanda Prince will be fully reinstated to all actions and duties related to her role as a Hooper City Planning Commission member. I'm asking that all city council members who are in agreement with this sign this letter during our work meeting tonight. And Debra's already signed it. I plan on signing it, and, and I believe, uh, we're all in accord in doing this. The other, the other issue that we really wanted to.
So is this not concerning the same thing, or should we address this first?
No, this, this is different.
Okay, let's, let's, let's address this first, then. Um, anytime you are talking about anyone, and you're aware of this, anyone's character or any possible legal action, it needs to be done in a closed-door executive session.
Well, we're not, we're not talking about character. We're just talking about reinstating her.
Not in an open. But, but there is.
So we're talking about reinstating her.
Currently, there is an active investigation going on. I was given direction by the police department that is handling this investigation, that this is the action that needs to be done.
No, that's, that was a violation of city code, what you did, so.
It was, it was not.
Yes, it is.
And so based on, based on an active investigation, this is what has to happen. She is not removed, and if, if the time does come when we need to discuss the removal of her, it will go before.
So are, are, let me ask you this, are you vetoing, if we all sign this, are you vetoing that, vetoing it?
Yes, I am, because it's not a removal.
Okay, you can't do that.
So what is going to happen with this is, it's an active investigation. Anytime there is an active investigation, there are certain rules that apply to that, and according to the police department, that's what this is.
Did they, so did they direct you to suspend her?
They did.
I, I highly doubt that.
Well, you can, I, doesn't matter, she has been.
I highly doubt that. But anyway, as far as the city, as far as the city planning commission is concerned, she's reinstated.
I can make an offer to see that is, whether it works.
So, so until we have more information, the meeting was already, and hopefully by the next meeting, the next planning commission meeting, we will know more. And at the time when we do, then, because there's nothing that is for her to do between now and the meeting that will be held on March thirteenth.
She's, she's reinstated. There's proof of this right there.
Well, Bryce, that is not what's going to happen, so she is not.
So also, also the other, the other items that we wanted on there, um, because we really need to get, the planning commission needs to function by itself.
For sure.
And who's doing the agendas? So we need to define some, have some terms, and that's what we wanted to talk about, but you wouldn't put it on the agenda.
Well, okay, let's just kind of go back with that a little bit. You do not give any kind of explanation of what you want on the agenda. You give four items, and I was waiting for some direction, and I didn't receive any direction, but let me tell you what happens. And I said that in the email I sent you. As you are aware, all of you are aware.
You sent it to me at four fifty on Wednesday.
That, that's, that is true.
Yeah.
Because I was waiting for further direction from legal, as was far as that was. And it had already been brought up, you'd already brought this up, the letter you had brought up the week before to our meeting that you wanted to have on our agenda, as far as the revoting, and then we told you then, no, that's planning commission, correct? We had already discussed this. This is up to planning commission.
I'm not sure where you're going with this.
Well, okay, it's up to planning commission. Bottom line is, planning commission.
Yes, it is. But, but what we need to do is the city council is give them some guidance, because it, there's, there's nothing, they don't have their terms set, the agenda process.
The terms would have been set at the last meeting, but we didn't have a law.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not going to pull it out of a hat. We decided that's not the way we're going to.
Well, we'd already decided that in the meeting before, that's how we were going to, so.
We're not going to do that, so I don't know, I don't know how you guys feel, but we're not going to, we're not going to pull names out of a hat.
We're not going to sit and discuss names in a meeting. We are not.
No, we're not. Ryan has a solution, and I think it'll work, so.
We're gonna do, uh, s- s- secret ballot, basically. We're gonna, all of us, make a ballot with who we want, for what terms, and we'll have somebody other than somebody on the council compile the ballots, and then come up with what we got.
Okay, and we had discussed that at the meeting. Do you remember? We discussed that?
At the work meeting we did.
At the work meeting we did, and then we discussed about doing a draw, and I believe it was even you that Bryce said, okay, let's go ahead and do the draw.
Probably, but that, that was a poor, that was a poor decision, so I retract that.
We felt like secret, secret ballot would be the better way to do it, because that's the choice of the city council, instead of just some happen chance.
I don't think that's, yeah.
And that was in the original motion for the city council to decide what the term was going to be.
Yeah.
It was, and then we talked about it in the work meeting, how would we do that, and we never could decide. It was never agreed upon how we were going to decide, so.
So we just agreed upon how we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then at the next planning commission meeting, then, or excuse me, at the next city council meeting, then we will have.
No.
We'll do it tonight.
What's that?
Well, yeah, the next city council meeting.
The next city council meeting, we will do that. We will have Morgan then prepare something that she can do that with, and you can go ahead and vote for those, um, as far as the agendas, and, and I think, Bryce, you should be as well aware of this as anybody, because you served on the planning commission. Those agendas are set through the direction of things, applications that are applied at the city. So if someone comes in and applies, that is true.
That's, that's true. That is true.
So through Malcolm, through Morgan, that is who sets those agendas. It's not up to city council to be setting the, it's not up to us.
Right. But. No, no, it's not us. No, I'm not saying it's us, it's the planning commission, so if two of them, they should operate just like we do. If two, we should stay out of their business.
Correct.
But what we want to do, if two, because there's no ordinance for it, or, or code, if two of them, just like we do, want to put something on the agenda, they should be allowed to do that.
But there are, but there's differences between city council and planning commission. Planning commi-, there is, and you can go through.
Well, I'm sure there's difference in everything, however.
There is. There's differences between planning commission and city council. Planning commission are a recommending board
However.
that they are, have given things on their agenda based on things that need to be placed on the agenda, and they end up voting on those. City council, it's different.
Sure, yeah. Right.
Because city council is a recommending ordinances.
But still, they have, they still have, they still have things that, that are probably important, that need to be put on, so they need that flexibility as well. So in, in my mind, it looks like one person's controlling everything, and I think we need somebody to separate that.
Oh, for sure, for sure, we will separate that.
So we, we just did this, we, we just reinstated Amanda.
You did not. You did not. Legally, you cannot, whenever there's an active.
So.
So, let's talk about legal, what's legal and what's not legal, let's talk about that.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, let's do that.
Pretty clear in the code that the planning commission is determined by the city council.
Yes.
And that was made very clear in the last vote that they took two weeks ago.
Yes, that is correct, but we are not removing her. City council votes to remove her. We are not removing her. There is nothing in our code.
And, and one.
You don't have the authority to remove her?
You don't.
You do not.
I do not. City council does, but we are, we are not removing her, and I am not removing her.
But, 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 but even the process was what? She was supposed to have a hearing, so, so.
But, a hearing for removal. Go back and read the code. If, if we are going to vote, if you are going to vote to remove her, I am still part of city council, but I do not get a vote. If there's going to be a vote to remove her, yes, there's going to be a hearing, there will be a vote to remove her. We are not removing her. That is not what it says.
What, what is, what is administrative leave? What?
Administrative leave, just.
What, what does that do? What does that do right today?
That mean Amanda, the last meeting, she could not come and be voting on items with the planning commission while she's on administrative leave. That doesn't mean by the next meeting, once the investigating, the prosecutor is screening the case. When they are done screening the case, we will have more information.
The problem with that is that there's been an allegation made, and to place somebody on administrative leave because of an allegation that has not been proven would be that mean that any of these people or anyone in the audience could file a complaint against any of you, and you'd automatically be on administrative leave until there's a decision made. Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, well, also.
So do you have a lawsuit filed against you? Do you have a lawsuit today filed against you?
Also. That has nothing to do.
Yeah, because if you do, like Reed explained, if that, if you're guilty.
I am not going to talk about something that goes with the city. I'm not.
If, if you have a lawsuit filed against you, and, and it hasn't been proven one way or the other, then you could be on administrative leave till that's decided against.
She already missed the meeting, so even if you reinstate her today, what will she be doing until the next meeting? Anything?
Working on it.
What, what will she be doing? She won't. So, so by the next meeting, hopefully, we will know.
That's not preferable. That's the principle. It's frivolous.
And you, almost all of you know, if it would have been a different situation, and we would have had another planning commission member that would have hit someone else, they would have been handcuffed and taken out.
No, see, no, she didn't hit anybody.
Yes, they would have. We have two videos that show that, two videos. One of them is the city's video, and one of them was a cell phone, we were turned over.
Let's get, let's get back to the principle of what's legal and what's not legal. It, does, is the mayor authorized to put somebody on administrative leave?
Not as, not a council person, because the council is under the control of the city council or the commission. If you were, if you were to put them on administrative leave, that's essentially taking away their rights, and only the city council can do that.
Correct. Correct.
So we'll know by the next meeting, correct? By the next meeting, we will know.
So it's the experience for employees.
Now, we know right now. We know, we know right now, but that was illegal.
Yeah, position or.
What's that?
That's not something that can be used against them. That's what I read. That's only for employees.
Yeah.
Well, what you need to understand, and I, and I am really disappointed in you as city council members, because what you need to understand,
That's for love.
I, I will tell you, I received a complaint in the office about that.
Anonymous, I'm sure. I'm sure it was anonymous, right?
I had been gone homesick for two days, and when I came, I received a complaint. So what are we telling to residents that they can come to a meeting and may possibly get hit? So, so, so what do we say?
No, no.
So if you don't do anything, then you're in trouble. If you do do something, you are in trouble. This should be a safe place for people to be able to come. They should never, ever feel that.
From harassment and targeting, sure, all the above. Everyone should be free from harassment.
Yep, you're right. Everyone, you are, you are a hundred percent.
Because we've all experienced it.
There's actually a court section that covers that, that says it's a class A, a class B misdemeanor, if you try to intimidate a member of the council or the commission.
It's not a safe place. I should be, I should be concerned about the city council.
Yeah.
So that's fine.
Deborah's trying to talk it.
You should be concerned about the city council and our safety versus some, if, if, if irreverent in, individuals in the audience. We have them harassed, we have them yell at us, we have them scream at us. There is no way that that is acceptable in this council room.
That is correct. So if you want to go ahead and do that, then, like I say, by next meeting, something should be settled. By then, the case will be screamed, there will either be charges filed, there won't be charges filed, but at that time, if there are, then we will have a closed meeting where we will talk about this, and then we will open the meeting up for you to vote one way or the other, and that's the proper chapter that happens.
I've, I've already voted. I, I'm still standing by that.
Well, that's fine.
So I'm standing by that. That's my vote.
What happens, what happens to you're innocent until proven guilty? We've acted upon someone who is innocent as of right now. She hasn't been proven guilty of anything, and we've acted upon someone on the premise that someone else has made. I mean, that seems, that seems detrimental to our time and justice system if we start doing that. Well, this is under the direction of the Roy City Police Department, and I was given direction by them. I waited until the very date before, that's why the letter.
I'm gonna call, I will call tomorrow, because I, I know.
You go ahead. Yep, you go right ahead. Okay, so.
Do we roll one? Ask Brian, or if we can do this next Thursday. These other three items, do we want to call another meeting on Tuesday since we can't seem to get it on the agenda, or what do you think?
No, we're, if it's not an emergency, we're not calling meetings.
Well, I, there, if you would have put it on, we could have handled it. There was, there was three items.
Okay, but you already discussed that. We're talking about planning commission doing their own, right?
No, there was four items, yes.
You're right. So planning, planning commission will do their own agendas, correct? They will.
But we need, we need, so, so let me. But, back up for a second. There is, there is not, there, we need to put some legislation in place so they can function independently. Right now, it's like, they're, they're not. They, they, they're not actually independent. No, they're not, so we need to, we need to help them out so they can be on their own.
Well, they are. Well, they should be. No, city council should not be trying to do anything, and, and those that came to the training, which you ti- did.
No, 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 that's not true. The code says.
There was training that said that city council and planning commission are supposed to be two independent bodies.
The code says. Yeah, but, but they, that's right, but the code says we're supposed to establish one and establish the procedures of how they function. And it's not clear in the ordinances, so we need to help them out and do that, so they, so we can leave them alone and let them do their job, and that includes you too. Everyone needs to do it.
For sure, for sure, yes. So at their next planning commission meeting, I guess at our next city council meeting, you are going to determine their terms.
Okay, let's do it.
So you will do that. We are not having an emergency meeting to talk about how planning commission should function. That, we're not, because they can do that on their own. They can do, will do the terms at our next meeting on March, that meeting will be held on March the sixth. So we will have that meeting, and they, you, by then, you will, will have a ballot, we will have Morgan write a ballot. She will go through and have it, and you'll all vote, correct? That's how you want it done?
Uh, except for the date.
What else, what else do we have on there?
March sixth is our next, our next meeting.
There was, there was that.
There was the, the agendas, uh, the.
And they do their agendas.
The terms, and additional meetings, if they needed to call an additional meeting.
And, and again, the additional meetings will be underneath, so what you need to understand is the role of the planning commission.
We understand.
So with the new subdivision ordinance, they, there may be a time they may have to have an additional meeting. That's not up to city council to say you have to.
No, it's up to them, that's, that's what I'm saying.
It's up to them. It's, it's going to be up to Malcolm that says, I have this application in, we have a complete submission.
That's what I'm saying.
So you have to have that done within those fifteen days. If it falls within the time, there's going to be a meeting that will be held. If it doesn't fall, they may have to have a different meeting, but that will be under the jurisdiction of Malcolm saying there needs to be a meeting, another meeting scheduled. That's not city council.
So can, can we do these on the sixth of March?
We can picture, I mean, the critical one is, is, is this right?
Sixth of March.
So how do we, how do we know if these are going to actually get added to the agenda?
Again, my question is, why are those added to city council's agenda? Because we want to discuss it.
See, because. See, now, right now, see, we, we do the same thing, we say, okay, we'll move the meeting back, because it wasn't put on for tonight, and already you're pushing back that we can't put things on our own council meeting agenda.
Okay, so let's, let's do this, because I was going to go over this anyway. We are going to start having our agendas come out the week ahead. So the Wednesday before, the week before, anything you would like on the agenda needs to be submitted to Morgan the week before.
We can still add this up to twenty-four hours before.
And we also. But that is.
Legally.
Legally, you can.
Yes, end of story.
Poor practice, poor practice, because that gives no time for anybody to even have time.
Legal.
We go off of legally around here.
And when you send something and it has four words, A, B, C, and D, we have no idea. Reed has no idea, I have no, yes, they do.
But you're describing things that don't happen. You're, you're describing things.
Okay, so, so when you send something.
Look, I, I think we've done, I think we're done talking about this, because every time we start talking about this, we just go in circles, and you take us all these directions. What we're saying is, is when we put things on the agenda, and like, two council members wanted to put it on the agenda, you did not put it on, or
I did not.
it either doesn't show up at all, or it might go on the Wednesday before. That's not, that's not what we've requested.
So, so when you send, you want something on the agenda, and you say Amanda Prince, how do we know what that is? How do Reed and I can prepare for what you're going to bring that says Amanda Prince?
Rather than that, yeah.
So, so what you need to do is, is have a report sent to us so we know. That's how it is done in other cities, so they can prepare.
What you describe, you, you're guilty of yourself, so, so maybe, maybe we all can do better, but I don't know how many times we got an eighty-page packet the day before.
Yeah.
Well. We, yes. Well, and we're trying, and we're trying to do better. We, not the day before. We tried to do them the week, and we're going to do them the week before.
So. Well, it's pretty close.
So, and if we had a city manager, which is me, because we don't, then I have been doing marriage reports. Have all of you seen the marriage reports I've been doing? So you know what it is we're going to be discussing. I don't just put something on there that you have no idea. No, I'm not.
I know, but you're trying to reverse, you're trying to reverse onto us what we, what we're trying to do here, and I don't understand that. Why, why are you fighting this?
Okay. The reason, again, and I'll say it one more time, because planning commission is responsible for planning commission. That is not under, you should not be dictating to a planning commission.
Well, you can say it a dozen times, because it'll be just. Right. But that's what we're trying to tell you. That's what we're trying to explain to you.
A hundred percent. I know that, but the interesting thing is, then it should go to planning commission. So I thought when you decided, Bryce, last time, we were going to do drying, I'm not the one that said, let's don't do a drying, so that's what we thought it was going to be. Morgan came prepared. She had all the terms drawn out. We didn't have a planning commission that showed up. Our very first time having, needing to have four people, we only had three, so we couldn't do the drying, correct? Everybody agrees? So we thought we would do it the next meeting, but if now you're going back and you're not agreeable to doing it as a drying, then we will instruct Morgan to do a sheet for all of you to vote, correct? Correct. And as far as having additional meetings, that will be.
We'll, we'll write it out for you. We'll write it out so that, we'll, we'll give you the instructions so there won't be any reason for there to be an excuse for not doing it.
And as far as additional meetings, we are not going to call additional meetings anytime unless they are nee- needed. That is a waste of taxpayer dollars. If we need to have additional planning commission meetings, they will be called, and Malcolm will be aware of those, and so additional ones will be called, so.
Well, we'll, we will determine that as well. If we need a, a meeting, we can determine that as well.
Well, you don't determine having additional planning commission meetings. Why would you?
No, I'm not, no, that's what we wanted to, let them know is they can decide, not us. See, I think you're getting it wrong. We're trying to give them the names.
Oh, me too. That's what I'm saying. Well, but when you, when you give a sheet of what you want city council to determine for planning commission.
I, it doesn't appear that way. So my concern, Reed, is, is this right here, because I'll, I'll stand by it one hundred percent, so I think we need to make a phone call to Roy City Police.
Well, Roy doesn't control what you do.
Or, right, so, so, so I don't know if, if you're telling the truth or not.
That's just it.
Well.
So this, this in my mind, I stand, and it's legitimate, and I'll stand a hundred percent behind it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so let's move on then.
Well, Debbie's got a comment here.
Did you speak with the chief, or what, who did you speak with? Because that's the person I would like to contact.
Okay, so I will talk with you after Debbie. I feel like we've spent enough time on this. So it was Roy City. Anybody's, and I have, and I have the case number, and Debbie, I'm happy to give that to you after, the case number.
That's, I don't need the case number, I just need to know.
Okay, so let's move on. Um, Morgan needs to know who's attending the lead conference, April sixteenth through the eighteenth. She said she needed to know. Bryce did, no one else did respond to Morgan. If you're, you won't be, Ryan, will you be attending?
I responded to her. I would be attending.
I'm going to tell.
You, you will?
I'll be in Florida.
Oh, in Florida, okay, okay. Debbie, will you be attending the conference in St. George in April?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, and we will get with Lisa. Okay, um, thank you on that. Okay, our next thing then is, let's go to agenda items. So are there any questions on financials? And I asked Ryan to kind of go through this a little bit, because he met with us with Kami, and, and then everybody should have a copy, it was in the packet, of the last financial statement. Did everybody receive that? Yes, no? Head nod? Okay, okay, thank you.
So, um, if you've read a little bit of this, our overall revenue, or, first of all, we're fifty-nine percent through the year as of January thirty-first. Revenues, our budget to date, right exactly at fifty-nine percent, and expenditures are under budget at forty-four percent. Um, the three categories of the utility fund, uh, garbage, sewer, and stormwater are all revenue approximately fifty-nine percent. Um, expenses for sewer, forty-nine percent, garbage, fifty-four percent, and stormwater, just under ten percent. However, we're going to spend some money on stormwater because of this state mandated audit that J U V just did for us, and so we've got to spend some money catching up on that with the findings that they found in our city.
One thing, Ryan, on this first page, you know, when it talked about how our, um, income for the utility franchise is slightly under budget, and we had talked about that, because there are ones we thought that would be getting charged that, that aren't. So with rates increasing, we are surprised that this ends up coming in under budget. But you said, like, with the post office, they're not being.
The churches aren't being charged, there are certain businesses that aren't being charged, the schools probably aren't being charged. I mean, some major hitters like we suspected would be, are not being charged for that. Not only that, but the same thing that I argued from the beginning, is there's people that have solar panels, that have a very small utility bill, that don't pay as much of a franchise tax as those that do not have solar panels, and so it's, it's not a fair and equitable tax in my mind, but it is what it is, so. Yeah, we're two thirty-five, two seventy-one after six months, which is slightly under the projected, we thought we would have for this time of the year.
And also on that same page, it talks about the Class C road funds. So if you add up those two totals of how much we have in Class C road funds, it comes to two million four hundred and twenty-five dollars and nine hundred and sixty-three, or two million four hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-three, which sounds like a lot. But at the meeting where, um, Ryan attended with us, if you add up the Class C road funds, it ended up being a million, almost a million and a half dollars, and that was to do two miles with the road. So based on our, you know, Class C road funds, we have enough to do about, well, two and a half miles of.
That's not true. It depends on how you treat the road. There's four, four different types of treatment on the road.
Yes, four different categories, e- exactly.
If you choose the most expensive one, it's only seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars for two miles of road.
Yes.
Um, if you do the least amount, which is, has to be on a road that's in fairly good shape, it's a hundred and forty-two thousand for three miles of road, which is the slurry.
It's the crack seal. Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah.
Jared probably recommended the, the chip and seal method on roads that are actually in decent shape still, and that's a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for two miles of road. So if you take our two point four million, um, and put into that a hundred and seventy-four thousand per two miles, then you're roughly, uh, twenty, twenty-four miles.
Yeah, well, it depends on.
Of chip and seal.
What need, yes, if it's only chip and seal, it needs to be done, but if there's overlay or chip, but they're going to start working on that, a project, go through, evaluate our roads, and determine which roads can just get the crack seal, which ones need to do the slurry, and as far as overlay and so forth, so.
There's approximately ninety-eight miles of road in Hooper City that we have to maintain, so.
Yeah.
Um, and that's just C road, not including the state roads.
How long do they say that will last? Chip and seals, like every five years, ten years, you know?
He didn't, he didn't say, but, um, I would, I would think five to ten years. Well, no, five to seven, five to seven years, probably, yeah.
And so he says, you know, it always looks like we have a lot of money in these Class C road funds, but they really do save them up, so they have enough money that when they go out to do a project, that they can say, okay, we're going to do an overlay project, for example, then they would say how many roads they can do, but they will evaluate. Um, Jared and Cody will evaluate this, and so they can tell us which roads they plan on doing, and which of these processes they end up doing with that.
Um, let's see, what else was there? Anyway, uh, we're gonna meet, uh, next Thursday for first budget meeting of the year on the twenty-seventh, uh, six P M. Um, city council, Kami, and that's it, right? Just the, just us.
It's an open meeting.
Yeah, it's a public meeting.
At six thirty, did you, or?
Six o'clock, I think we talked about.
Did we say?
When's that?
Next Thursday, the twenty-seventh.
Yes, six o'clock. One thing we spent quite a bit of time on, and she'll go through every bit of this, was, um, looking at our employees and allocating them to where they need to be, because you have enterprise funds that can only be spent for certain things along with, so we have employees that do partial sewer, partial roads, you know, partial parks. And so we spent quite a bit of time, we didn't really get all the way through it, because we were, spent quite a bit of time on that. But we will go through and get all those classified, so it ends up being where it needs to be.
Well, and part of the problem is, since we lost Teresa, the coding isn't done correctly. And so there's been nobody really to walk into Teresa's shoes and code the budget like she was doing. And so, um, it's gonna take some training on, uh, department heads, um, staff, myself, to figure out coding and how, um, the money is allocated to each individual budget line. And so that's, that's gonna be a work in process for the next few months.
So who's been doing it until now?
So what, so one thing that Kami, just a little bit side note with that too. Kami does budgets a little different. So Kami likes to break things down separately where we did not. And sometimes it's easier just to say, all of this employee's expenses go to this one category, but it's really not how it should be.
Isn't that what the codes are for, to determine?
Well, not necessarily with the employees.
The codes, well, we budget by code.
Yeah.
You know, as you can look at your budget and see the vast amount of line items that we have. And so anytime we spend money, it should be not just a general category, let's just throw it into sewer, but there's thirty line items in sewer that are whatever we spent that on.
And in the past, we did. Um, since Kami's came, she wanted to break that down and say, rather than it just all say sewer, it needs to be broken down, and stormwater. So like sewer and stormwater could have been in the same category, and Kami said, no, it shouldn't have been. We need to split those out so we can tell, is sewer covering sewer? Do we have enough in stormwater to cover stormwater? And that, that wasn't necessarily done in the past. So, so we're gonna go through that and make sure that we get things coded out separately, so it, it shows that. Um, one. Oh, go ahead.
I'll just talk about Jared's wish list, or not wish list, but there's, there's some immediate needs in the sewer that need to be funded pretty quick. He gave us about, well, I think the one item was still gonna be funded by ORPA money, which was about eighty-three thousand dollars. It's the manhole bypass at the North Vacuum Station. But there's another approximately, um, seventy-five thousand dollars of immediate needs that need to be, um, talked about. And we'll talk about that in our budget meeting, so. And, and then there's numerous, uh, I hate to call them wish list items, but important items that should be budgeted within the next three to five years, so we need to look at all of them.
One thing, if you have your financials on page three, which, um, I think is something good to note. So it said that the city received a ramp grant for two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and it's on page three of this front, of this, this one, right? Anyway, um, this was for the restrooms at Hooper Park, and I was notified by the ramp grant committee in December that the completion report had never been done for this ramp grant, so Hooper City had never received this money. And so I went ahead and completed that report in December, so we would actually receive this money. And so that's, that's good to know. Yeah, yeah, because, because we hadn't received it. And so when they were back going through their audits, they realized that a, a completion report had never been done for that grant. So we, we, and I did call today to verify, and they gave me the date that check was sent and was cashed. So we have, in fact, received that money.
One thing we do need to talk about, and Sharon and I have talked about this before, is, um, city council should be approving expenses over a certain threshold. Um, we've talked about twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, five thousand, we just don't know where to put our button on, which number. And so, um, we need to come to a decision probably in our budget meeting, what that amount is, and what the council needs to be aware of and approve over that certain limit. And so, um, that's something we'll discuss as well.
So in our current ordinance, it says five thousand. And I brought this up last year, January, and said that we were supposed to be doing that. And I was questioned and said, no, as long as it's in the budget, we don't need to do that. Well, it, it is in our ordinances, that anything over five thousand is supposed to be approved. Um, at the time, Teresa said she felt like five thousand maybe wasn't quite high enough. Maybe it needs to be ten thousand, because sometimes there's bills that come in, just a routine like, um, power bill or something at one of the lift stations. But that, Ryan's right, that is something that we need to do. We've talked about, we could give you a copy of the check registers, you go to the sewer meetings. There is a check register that is given every, every month, so that might be something. Um, but that is, like Ryan mentioned, something that we need to be following, because it is one of our ordinances that we should be following.
The last thing I have on the financials is, um, Eric Capital Projects page, the very, very last page, um, talks about Parks Trails, capital expenditures, Fifty-Five Hundred West Project, City Hall. Um, there's been a line item added titled Smith's Development Expenses. Um, we've, just this month of January, there was seven thousand forty dollars spent in that line item, um, which, if we were following our code and approving over five thousand expenses, the city council should have been aware of that.
So what that is, is for the L R B study? So city council approved.
No, we didn't.
No, 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 no.
For L R B to do a study.
We didn't approve, the city to pay for it.
But what has to happen with that is the city has to pay, then we are reimbursed by the developer.
When's that gonna happen?
Um, as soon as, they're coming tonight to present it. The study ended up being fifteen thousand. You were given the choice of the two different companies, and the company that you picked, um, those charges ended up coming to fifteen thousand. So that's financially how it has to happen. We pay and they reimburse. So as soon as we pay the other, we will send it to, and they have signed the contract along with us. There is a contract we had to sign with L R B stating that we would pay, and then those costs would be reimbursed.
Um, wasn't, didn't we, I mean, I, I'm, the, the mic's not working real well, so I'm just catching bits and pieces. But didn't we agree that we would do this fiscal impact fee if Stuart Adams paid for it?
Correct, and he is going to pay for it.
Yeah, that's right.
They signed the, that's what I was saying, Debbie. He also signed the contract. So we had a contract that was reviewed by legal. We had to sign it, and they had to sign it. So we, and they reimburse.
With the L R B.
With L R B, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, contracts with L R B.
So the seven thousand forty will be reimbursed?
Is, is the half. There's still, that is only the first half. The study ended up being over fifteen thousand dollars. So we paid half down, and then then once we, and now we've completed the study, they sent us C and voice for the additional, that will be paid, and they will reimburse us.
So what was the?
For all fifteen thousand.
What was the big one?
Um, it started out at about, it was less than that, but then it ended up, it was more, it went up. And it was not what, yeah.
So why?
Started off at ten, ended up at fifteen.
Why did we okay the extra?
Yeah, I mean, that was a great thing, was it?
Well.
You guys, you were in the meeting on Zoom call with Jason, and the final bills that are discussed, at least Bryce, well, I don't recall everyone else. So.
Yeah.
It indicated that it was gonna be five thousand dollars more.
Yeah, remember we were in the conference room, and you were in there, Bryce, and they talked about it, and said what it was, yeah.
So nonetheless, that should have come before the council, because it was over five thousand dollars.
So it, it will, it will be reimbursed. So it's not a study that's going to be, it's not a cost, it's going to be a cost to the city, it will be reimbursed.
Okay, and that's, that's not contingent upon approval of the project?
Whether they reimburse us or not?
Yes.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on financials? This is something that was in the packet, and it is on our agenda for tonight, but it is not anything that has to be approved. Okay, um, the next thing then, is there any questions on the L R B study? And we will have Jason, Burningham will be here tonight to do the presentation for us. If you had a chance to go through this, hopefully you have, and you have questions.
So is this, I know he's only presenting to us, from what I understand, so.
And his planning commission, we, we.
Oh, he is gonna go back.
No, we said for the planning commission to come to this meeting, because he would only come one time, and because it was city council that commissioned the study, then he is coming here.
So I've, I've had several people reach out to me on this, and they want to know if there's gonna ever be a public comment on, on this study, because there's a lot of questions. So does this need to go for a, a, a public hearing, or, you know?
To have questions answered?
Yeah.
Um, hopefully they will.
Or, or they can even ask questions in the public, you know? I'm, I'm just asking, what's, because I don't know. We get this, and then what's the next step?
Yes.
The Smiths on the doorstep, the planning commission, is that the next step?
So he will come tonight, and hopefully you, that's why we gave it to you plenty of time in advance, so you would have time. So hopefully you will ask your questions, and he can go through and explain your questions.
Hmm?
So.
Where'd you get your hard copy?
Morgan printed it out.
Yeah. And I, I can't even pick it up.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Anyway, um, so hopefully everybody has their questions. So he will come tonight, he will answer the questions. That was part of the contract, and I think in that meeting, Marina as well, Bryce, they talked about, they would come to one meeting and present this.
So as part of, the, the public hearing issue is an interesting one. They had a lengthy public hearing at the planning commission meeting when they presented initially. Uh, after that hearing, the planning commission, uh, asked for the financial study. They asked, the council asked for the financial, for the financial study. That was asked for, now this will be returned to the planning commission. Uh, they wouldn't need to have a public hearing again, because they've already had one. They would consider it, decide what their recommendation will be that it comes to you, same issue there. No requirement for a second public hearing, you're always able to do that, but no requirement.
So this will be tonight, and like I say, hopefully everybody's had a chance to look through it. And Ryan, if you want a copy made, we could go make you a hard copy, if you would like that before. Would, would you wanna?
I'd agree.
Okay. Malcolm, we can go make you that hard copy. Anyway, so hopefully you have questions, and he will be here. We figured it might be, let's see, I think it might be Lot, do you have the key to be in?
Yeah, I'll get it, I got a print.
Okay. Um, anyway, I think he'll do about a thirty-minute presentation, have about thirty minutes to answer questions for you. So hopefully you've came with all of your questions, so you can ask that. And then the next step will be that, um, yes, they will, not L R B, but then it will, it will be for planning commission.
Bryce, I do think it's Terry Strata's intention though to come to, yeah, like you mentioned. I do think it's Terry Strata's intention to go to planning commission to request opening the general plan right after, you know, the next one.
So March.
March thirteenth.
Yeah, that's correct. That's at least what they've expressed to me, is that they'll be, they haven't officially requested to go and open the general plan, but they've expressed that's probably the date they want to come.
Anything you wanna discuss about this before he comes with the, was there any specific questions you had, or?
Well, I, I burst through it, and it seems that it's all pretty much, um, this, I mean, the whole thing's kind of contingent upon a CRA.
So he addresses two different things. The first one, as he said, was to evaluate the development, the fiscal benefits. And then the second one was about the CRA. So I think he addresses those, both of those separate. Like the first one is based just on the fiscal benefits, and then the sec, the number two, he does go in and talk about the CRA.
Yeah, and it seemed like, he says it was cost prohibitive if we didn't get CRA.
For the developer, yeah. Well, he, he's implying that the lift station, in his opinion, is too cost prohibitive without CRA for a developer in general to do this project.
Right. So, and, um, so, uh, CRAs are something that I'm not real fond of, but I, I'm willing to, uh, listen and see, see what there is.
Did they include, um, trying to remember who the developer is on the Forty-Seller West East Side, Mount Haglenettles.
Hamblin, did I have that?
Did they include him in this discussion at all, as a, as a contributor?
I didn't notice that.
I, I don't think so.
Because he would obviously directly benefit from this as well.
Hamblins and Pitchers, that was just a little bit north of Hamblin.
So when they, this is a question of mine, so when they tie that, so say, say it goes in and Hamblins decide to tie it to that, are there impact fees any different or greater, or can you make them greater, or?
Well, that, that was the problem with Hamblins not doing it in the first place, because the impact fee would be too high. When he went to buy Lot, it cost too much.
I think as Malcolm mentioned, he'll talk to you about that tonight. They feel like the cost of a lift station is very prohibitive for any developer, and it's just what you're saying, Dell, as far as with Hamblins. It was too expensive for any one developer to do a lift station on their own.
Because at the time, I think we only told Hamblins it'd be, what, about a million dollars?
Yeah, now.
Now it's three.
Two point.
Twenty-two and three million, yeah. Well, I think it'll be interesting, and I think this will be good to have them come. We've been waiting for a while for this study, and so I think it'll be good to have them come. And like I say, I hope you have a lot of questions written down that you can, you can go ahead and ask him what, and he will be able to explain this better. I reviewed it, I know Malcolm's reviewed it, we've tried to, but I, I will admit, I don't understand all of it. So I certainly have some questions about it, so. Okay, anything else on that? If not, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the, the Roy forty-three. They're coming tonight to do a presentation, this was also in your packet. Any questions on what this is, that was in your packet?
What's, what's the benefit of Hooper City?
For this Roy? Um, those were some questions I had as well. So, so Roy will be coming to present this. Malcolm has a presentation, a little, don't you have some?
They'll, they'll have a presentation. I don't know a lot about it, and just a brief context, I don't wanna take like, just, they came in and asked if they could stub off that road to access that three home development, and I just, you know, I didn't, Jared and me, collectively, we didn't wanna look at the feasibility too much until there was a gauge on, you know, the possibility.
So is the reason for that, because, uh, UDOT won't let them come on to Fifty-Five Hundred South, is that?
I don't know if, I'm not familiar.
Yeah, I guess we could ask them.
Yeah, I don't know if familiar with the area, I just know that there's that canal that cuts in between their development, and they can't. I, I think it's the only road they can get to there from, is the off Hooper Road. If you look at that site plan, but, and so anyways, they need sewer from Hooper and access from Hooper. And so that's what they're asking, but we haven't looked into it much, we just wanted to know if the council had any.
I understand.
I think, I think Rob, about this should go to the planning commission before we see it.
You feel like it should have gone to planning commission first?
So from what I understand, from what Jared explained, so when it was the question down before we had, for instance, like there was a developer that came in and wanted to know if the city council would be interested in selling a little piece of ground to them so they could do with that development, if you remember back on Fifty-Nine Hundred? This is kind of the same scenario. Um, the subdivision, if it ends up, so what they want to know is if something city council would even be entertaining the thought, because they would have to hook into Hooper Sewer. If you look at where the, these houses are going to be, and where the Roy Sewer is, so this is Roy's property, but they can't do the sewer underneath the slough. It says a landlocked piece of ground, and the only way to get to that is off of a, a Hooper Road. Because if you look further to the south, that's Hooper property, so they can't go off of Fifty-Five Hundred, because they don't own that land. So the reason why they're coming to ask is to see if that's even something city council would be willing before they go through all of their, just like we did before, saying, yes, this is something that you would allow them to do, is to hook into the Hooper Sewer. You would allow them to come off of the road from Hooper?
There's one other technical note, Roy is actually requiring a letter of approval from Hooper before they would permit this, so. That's the other part. And I, yeah, maybe made, could have been more sensitive, finding commission. I guess it just depends, anyway, how it plays out, or how you guys determine if you'd allow it or not.
It looked like it was three townhomes, or townhouses, correct?
Yeah.
It's not single families.
No.
They, they are single families.
Well, they're gonna address it in their presentation, I think they're trying to make, they're, they're, they're gonna be single family homes, they're there. Well, they're gonna address it in their presentation, I think they're trying to make, they're, they're, they're gonna be single family homes, they're, they're, they're saying to us that they're gonna be single family, they did some renderings and they look like a single family, but their, their other buildings definitely all townhomes on the other side, but they said they need to be single family at least.
In the packet, Brian, there was the picture of the renderings and they're single, they're single.
It's on my map, it did look like single families.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why they're coming to city council and they will present that to you and, um, because like I say, they wanna see if it's even something you would consider or not before they go through all the labor intensive and cost to end up coming in.
Does that seem a little familiar to you though?
Yes, they've, we've had that discussion before.
They, we've seen this before.
I believe you guys have seen them before as well, I think it, I honestly, Jared said that maybe they.
Tried going into this call of sass, but we're hoping to help.
I think so, you guys remember they done before or something? Before, I think it was townhomes, that's what the developers said, and that there was a lot of interest at this time, they're hoping single family homes would be more agreeable.
Okay, um, and I'll make these announcements too when the next meeting starts, but emergency preparedness meets on the second Wednesday of every month from six-thirty to eight o'clock. And so if any of you are ever interested in coming to the emergency preparedness, and then some of you took on, or said that you would be willing to help with some of our community volunteer committees. There was the beautification, economic development, the community events and arts council, and they meet on the third Tuesday, they decided of every month at seven o'clock here. So, um, and I again will announce that, but any of you that were going to help on any of those committees, if you want to come and, and help with that, then that is when they're meeting as well. And we should know next week as far as grants, the, um, on Wednesday, the arts committee is meeting, they came the center liaison. We presented about Hooper Tomato Days, we told them we're willing to take partial funding, any funding that we could get that would help with our celebration, we feel like would be really beneficial. And then Thursday Parks and Recs are going to be meeting and those grants were to do the, or the portable bleachers to get some grass out here around the pickleball courts and then to do some, uh, power upgrade. But we should know that, well, at, as of the end of next week, so. Is there any other city council reports of anything that you have met with this week or month, or since the last two weeks that you wanted to report on?
One thing from the sheriff's department is the animal shelter is no longer under the sheriff's department, it's like its own entity from what it sounds like to me now, so that's just the thing that I think of from there. They are doing a great job, they have a lot of deputies that are receiving recognition and, um, they, they seem to really be striving to do a much better job.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the seniors met today, the senior citizens, so they meet on those, their lunches, the first and third Wednesday of every, or excuse me, Thursday, they changed it from Wednesday to Thursday. We didn't have it very many today, there was, what, eight?
Eight or nine.
Yeah, but with weather, it kind of puts a damper on and they have a little more difficult time. So that is the first and third Thursday of every month, anybody that's over the age of sixty-five is welcome to come and join with the seniors, they have a really good meal and it's a four dollar suggested donation. If you're at that age and want to come and meet with the seniors, so twelve o'clock. Mm-hmm, yeah, yep.
I don't know if you heard Lisa, but our budget meeting's next Thursday.
Oh, it's next Thursday?
Next Thursday, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
The first of, who knows how many?
Yeah, we thought we'd do on the end of April, or excuse me, February, March and April, on the fourth Thursday of all those months, so we'll have time to really dive into it back to them, so. Okay, if nothing else, then we will close this meeting and we'll move back to our next meeting, and so Malcolm, we get this one closed and I'll do the next, thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Yo, switch, yeah.
Yeah.
Recording.
Here's, this is yours.
Okay, so everyone knows we have new microphones, they cannot be left on all the time or you can get that static buzz, so when you are speaking, you need to turn your microphone on.
I think it can stay on.
At seven o'clock, we would like to go ahead and welcome you to Hooper City Council, it is February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. We have new microphones and we have to remind her to turn them on when we're speaking and turn them off. So if we forget, put a thumbs up so you'll know we need to hurry and turn our microphone on, but hopefully this will provide you better able to hear, we've had some difficulties with that in the past. We are going to go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance by council member Wilcox and the reverence by council member Fowers.
All right. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're always grateful to come before you. We give thanks unto thee for the many blessings that thou give us each day of our lives. We're grateful to be assembled here tonight in this city council meeting and for the blessing it is to have the freedom to meet and to express ourselves and to help make decisions. We pray that thy spirit will be here, that we might feel prompted to do those things which are best and which are right. That we'll be able to always appreciate where we live and the freedoms that we have here. And these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. As far as some upcoming events, we just want to make you all aware that the second Wednesday of every month, there is an emergency preparedness committee meeting that is here from six-thirty until eight o'clock. Any of you that are interested to come and be a part, um, Dave Harris is our director over that and is doing an outstanding job and he would appreciate anybody that would be willing to come and help with that. Also, we have some community, community volunteers, we have four different committees, we have beautification, economic development, and arts council and community events. And they meet on this, on the third Tuesday of every month at seven o'clock. So if any of you are interested in coming and being a part of one of our volunteer committees, we would really appreciate you coming to that as well. And also, we are going to be starting with some budget work meetings, and so next Thursday, February twenty-seventh at six o'clock, we will have a budget work meeting and all of you are invited to come. And it's something that the council will be doing, you won't be invited to speak, but you are certainly welcome and we always appreciate you coming and hearing as we discuss the budget for the upcoming year. So our next item on our agenda then is the approval of the minutes, date of February sixth, twenty-twenty-five, his council had a chance to review those minutes. Were there any corrections that you could see? The only correction I saw was a misspelling of horsepool and I mentioned that to Jamie, it's H-O-R-S-P-O-O-L, and that was the only correction I saw in those minutes. So with that correction, is there someone that will make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes, oh, Dave, microphone.
You heard me, okay, thanks. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the city council meeting on, from February sixth, twenty-twenty-five. The motion was made by council member Northrup, is there a second?
I'll second.
The second was made by council member Wilcox, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is a discussion item and it is our January financial report. If you look at the packet, and hopefully you do before you come to our city council meeting, every month there is a financial statement that is provided to us by our accounting firm. And so that is in there, um, so if ever you ever have any questions, please reach out to your city council member. And these are some things, like I mentioned, we are going to be discussing at our, um, upcoming work meeting for the budget. Council, do you have anything you would like to discuss with those financials? Okay, um, we will move on then to our next item. We have a presentation tonight and it is by the LRB company, which is Lewis Robertson and Burningham. And they are going to do our study that we have commissioned them to do, which is a fiscal impact analysis report. And it's Jason, correct? And we're happy to have you, and so we'll turn the time over to you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, good evening, appreciate the opportunity to be here, as the mayor, um, had indicated, um, we were invited, um, to participate and to prepare a fiscal impact study related to this, um, proposed Smith marketplace and mixed use residential development. Hopefully we'll be able to share a little bit of the presentation tonight, but maybe as we, um, get it established or set up, let me.
You wanna hang out, just one minute, I'll get you on.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't really get this pretty quick over here, but decided it doesn't wanna work anymore, but we can set you up on there real fast, in a second.
Maybe if I could, as Malcolm's getting that set up, I could do a quick introduction. My name is Jason Burningham, as, as was indicated by the mayor, uh, with the, uh, firm of LRB Public Finance Advisors and, um, we're located here in, in Utah, although we serve throughout the inner mountain west. Uh, we do, uh, financial advisory services to local government, uh, we also, uh, do many economic and fiscal impact studies, market studies and evaluation of land uses. As I know that the city was, um, looking at a potential, um, change in, in some zoning relative to this project. I think the idea of a fiscal impact study, um, was suggested and ultimately our firm was retained and commissioned to do that. This background that, um, I'll provide tonight also has an overview of, um, what we think is, um, potentially benefit, uh, ultimately to, uh, the city, at least in terms of fiscal benefit. We have not evaluated, um, perhaps all of the qualitative, uh, elements, but certainly from the fiscal, financial, economic, um, uh, element, we have, um, gone through this. I think this report was, I think, provided to the city council, uh, probably a couple of weeks ago, um, so my hope is to kind of go through this slide deck and. So my hope is to kind of go through this slide deck and present a summary of the information that we have, and then certainly address any questions. Hopefully, that can be viewed by the audience. So a quick overview, and the council is not able to see this as well, I apologize. So I'm going to try to make sure that I go through each of this pretty specifically. My presentation tonight, as I mentioned, will be focused on the fiscal impact relative to the proposed Smith's Marketplace and mixed-use development, which does include residential components, retail, as well as the grocery component. The first item that I was going to review is just the development pro forma to give the council an overview of what is proposed based on the site plan, the renderings, and the various other documents that we were provided. I think it's also important to review the key assumptions that went into our analysis, which included the taxable value or market value that would be created by this development. We also did a fairly deep dive into the sales tax and other sales and use tax that might be generated by virtue of this commercial development within the city. Since the city has recently imposed or put in place a municipal energy tax as it relates to electric power and natural gas, we also quantified what the additional development might bring in terms of municipal energy tax, which is also a revenue source to the city and the community. As I mentioned, and I'll go through this, but there are residential development units that are proposed in this. And so we also looked at the impact of how many units, how many additional residents would be estimated to come from this. And part of that was also the student growth, based on households and sizes and the demographics, how many new students we might anticipate in the school district. We were also asked to look significantly at the cost of services that this development would also bring. It's not just the benefit side of the revenues. We've also looked in quite a bit of detail the relative municipal services, local services, that would be provided by the city, by Weber County, and also by the state of Utah. So I'm going to address that this evening as well. I also have outlined tax increment financing. One of the main elements that came up as we were reviewing and evaluating this project was significant off-site development costs, public infrastructure costs, specific to sewer lift station. And because of that, we looked at ways in which that might be defrayed, the costs be defrayed. And so we've also included that as a cost of providing this development and looked at whether or not tax increment financing, the creation of a community or investment area, made sense fiscally, economically, based on the assumption that we have here. I will then go through the fiscal impact analysis and at a high level, give you a review of what our conclusions were. And then the last, to come back, kind of summarize those conclusions and then see if there are additional questions or comments that you might have as a council. We've looked at this through the lens of what exists currently. We feel like it is undeveloped or underdeveloped, underutilized in terms of land. It's primarily agricultural. That doesn't mean that it's not being utilized or being purposed in a way that's appropriate. We did identify that this 46-plus acres, I think it's there, 46.83 acres, although primarily agricultural and undeveloped, it does fit strategically into the general plan of the city. And this is a strategic corridor that's been identified. So in terms of appropriateness of use, we didn't do a significant investigation into that other than we did review the general plan, we looked at the land use ordinances, and felt like it was consistent that if the city wanted to consider rezoning, that this does make sense in terms of the overall general plan. If it were to move forward, then we would anticipate that this new development would create 165,000 square feet, more or less, of new retail space, most of that being the grocer. But there would also be other retail pads, financial institutions, fast food restaurants, other types of retail that would come into the project that is proposed as part of the site plan. There's also 117 residential units that it's fairly dense in terms of right near where Smith's Marketplace and the retail component is. And then it gets less dense as you move away from that focal point. But the total of 117 residential units assumes a mix of half-acre, quarter-acre, and then some very small PUD-oriented townhomes. So as we evaluated that, we determined that this would create an additional $53.8 million of tax value to the community. This kind of depicts a site plan. I know that most of you are familiar with it, so I won't maybe go over it in great detail other than to show there are numerous components to this project. There are a few tenants, if you will, that have been identified. I would say that those are more place markers. But most of it, we've been able to look at comparable projects in the Wasatch Front, either in Weber County or Davis County or close by, that have similar types of mixed tenants. This, you can see, is where we get the building square footage. The grocer is about 123,000 square feet. And the rest of the retail that would be coming in here would add, you know, another 30,000 or 40,000 square feet of additional retail space. In table 1.2, there below, you can see the different residential components that make up the total of 117 units. So 11 units of the quarter acre, 16 of the half acre, and then the PUD townhome condos is the balance of that. And this is where the $53.8 million of tax value would come from. This is based on comparables, so as you go through the actual study, there are technical appendices that detail several other comparable locations of Smith's or other retail or housing that we've used as comparables, either through the county assessor's office or the auditor's office to determine what it would be on the tax rolls. And we've concluded it would be almost $55 million of new value that would be created. I think some of the key assumptions are probably important to review with the council. Most of it is predicated upon square feet. So as we look at the, for instance, the amount of property tax value that would be created, it's primarily a function of square footage. Also, relative to the sales tax volume or the gross taxable sales, we also use a per-square-foot basis on comparable locations. Most of our model use the database of the State Tax Commission for similar retailers. And so we feel really comfortable with the retailers that we've identified here, including Smith's Marketplace, and what we anticipate their gross sales tax to be. Assess value in terms of land assumptions, that's the taxable assessed value of the land. Another component is employment. And that is both how many, in terms of the number of employees that we would anticipate that would come into this project area, as well as the income metric that we've also measured. Income tax is not a meaningful or really any contributor to the city, of course, nor is it to Weber County. But it is a major motivating factor for the state of Utah in terms of income tax. And so we did holistically look at this from the perspective of the city, the county, and also the state of Utah and other taxing entities. So employment also impacts you in terms of cost, as does, you know, the volume or the magnitude of what that employment looks like. So these key assumptions can kind of be broken down into other sub-assumptions. But nevertheless, I think that the point of this is there's really a lot of metrics and measurements that have gone into this based on the relative size of what this project is intended to be, and how many employees will come, how many patrons, and what the volume of activity will look like. This is another slide, a little bit redundant, but I just did want to point out again the amount of square footage, the number of residential units, and ultimately, the assessed or taxable value that would be created. $53.8 million of tax value on approximately 46 acres is pretty significant compared to the alternative or measurables, if you will, in the south part of Weber County. And particularly in the west side of Weber County. So this ratio of 53, almost $54 million spread over 46 acres is a fairly significant amount of tax base.
Recording in progress.
Hopefully, we're recording. Must be in progress. So this is a significant tax base. It certainly creates a lot of opportunity and benefit to the city. And as I'll go through the remainder of this information, it also comes with some costs. There are costs of public safety, public works, and other costs that are associated with it. In terms of the other assumptions, as I mentioned before, we did look at taxable wages. We estimated that almost approximately annually, $11.8 million of taxable wages would be created within this retail area. And another $40 million, $40.8 million of gross taxable annual sales. Now, the city general fund is primarily, right now, funded by sales tax, as you know. And that comes in the form of population distribution and also point-of-sale. This in particular would be both, because you'd have it located within your community. So a point-of-sale component is also likely with also the population that you already have within your community. But the various tax rates, the counties, the cities, the states, all of those are applied to these assumptions, the $40.8 million in gross taxable sales. I had mentioned this before, but I did want to cover the municipal costs. And so we've evaluated each of the city, the county, and also the state of Utah. And these next couple of slides is just a summary of what we anticipate would be the overall cost. Again, it's a period of time, 2025 through 2049. We did look at a 20-25-year period. But we estimate that there would be an additional $6.8 million of costs that the city of Hooper would have over the life of this measurable period. Those would be found in terms of tax increment. I'll get into that a little later as we look at the possibility of using tax increment to support the sewer lift station. You've noticed that that's a very low number for Hooper, because you don't generate very much in terms of property tax. But it is factored into this as a cost, because we assumed some portion would be used by the city to help support that sewer. The other costs are, as you would anticipate, public safety, public works, parks and recreation, and then general government expenses. And that's based on both the commercial, so all of the retail, that 165,000 square feet plus the 117 units of development is also factored into that. Now, in terms of the county, you provide most of the municipal services or you contract. The 117 units of development is also factored into that. Now, in terms of the county... Probably good.
Wanted you to make sure you...
Make sure I, yeah. Can you read that back? Make sure I got that statement.
I read what I'm saying.
Yeah. Because the city provides most of the municipal services either directly or you contract with service agencies or other special districts, et cetera, the county's costs are more on a regional basis and are broken down, as you can see, health and welfare, conservation and development is one of the line items in general government. A much larger portion of tax increment, we've analyzed as being the portion at Weber County, if the CRA were to be used, that would be the relative amount that the county would put into it. And so you can see those costs over the same time period, about 3.3 million, as compared to the city's cost of about 6.8. The last one is depicting the state. The state, general government, health and human services, public safety, courts, corrections, education, transportation, and miscellaneous or other. This is basically the general fund budget of the state of Utah. And so by virtue of 117 units and an additional 100, 200-plus employees and all of the other measurables that I mentioned beforehand, the state, we projected the state would have additional costs of servicing the residents and this development of about $53.1 million over that same period. And so a lot of costs obviously associated with that. But if you'll recall, they have both the income tax, which is well above 4% of gross taxable income, and also they have sales tax. Yours, 1%, but they collect 4.75%. So, you know, magnitude of four times more just on sales tax and also magnitude of income tax, which is significant for this. So although they have more costs, they have lots more revenue that's actually contributing to this benefit analysis. I did want to mention one other assumption. We did look at this east area sewer lift station. This is basically a bid tabulation that we were provided by the city to construct the sewer lift station, which our understanding would then provide adequate service for this project area. It would also provide additional development capacity for additional development also within the city. We've estimated, based on this, about a $2.3 million cost. For purposes of the analysis, we increased that to almost $3 million just so we could capture a little bit of the, potentially, the construction inflation or other costs that might be associated with that. So that was also part of the major assumption made here that is a cost that's factored into those previous figures, which is really where tax increment is being used. That's where the agency would be used to then fund in part or potentially all of the sewer lift station. So we use $3 million even though this cost estimate here, you can see, is $2.2 million. Even with that assumption adding to the cost, we still feel like there's a net benefit overall fiscally for each of the city, the county, and the state of Utah. I'm going to pause there just for a sec and see if I'm... if there are any specific questions on tax increment financing. I've got a slide here, but I wanted to make sure if this is redundant or if you've already received some information on this, I won't cover it in too much detail. But what would the council... But what would the council prefer? Would you like me to go through this tax increment and a little more?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So tax increment financing is a public finance tool that is used by municipal entities, local governments, well, nationally, and also significantly here in Utah, in Lieber County, and in cities adjacent to you. And this graph is kind of an illustration of, well, what is tax increment? If you can follow this a little bit, there's a white-blue kind of bar at the bottom of this diagram, and that is a base asset value. So in our particular example here for this project, it's potentially green belt, property taxes, or very limited amount of property taxes that are currently collected off of that project area. But for purposes of tax increment, that base year is established at the time you create it, and everything above that then would be considered what we call incremental tax revenue. And that's where tax increment financing comes from. And so if you follow this chart, assessed value is what I mentioned at the very forefront of this, there's an additional fifty-four million dollars of assessed value. And then the tax rates that the county, the school district, the city, and the other taxing entities impose is what is paid in property taxes. That property tax then gets paid to the county. And then the county, under a creation of a community reinvestment agency, then a portion of that can go to the agency to defray public infrastructure costs or to provide incentive or encourage the development of certain types of projects. So we evaluated it and said, okay, the sewer lift station is an off-site and rather large cost associated with this size of the project. So if you were to use tax increment financing, you would create this CRA, and that would define that boundary, which would be coterminous with, you know, the boundary of this development. We would set a base year value, and for all purposes, illustration, that could be zero right now. So all of the increment above that would be the forty-five or, excuse me, fifty-four million dollars of new value. And then the tax rate that's applied to that is what the dollar amounts would be that could be available to the agency. So in our analysis, for purposes of your fiscal impact, we assume that the hundred percent, so that's the gray shaded area, would only seventy-five percent of what's created of this fifty-four million would actually come back to the agency for a period of twenty-five years. And what that would equal is the equivalent of six million dollars over the life of that or using a term, net present value, terms of, well, what is the value of six million over twenty-five years, what is it in today's dollar? That would be about three point nine million. So close to the value of what we think the sewer lift station project might be. And so we conservatively estimated this high. We've used the full three point nine million even though the cost estimates were two point two, and we've used for the full time period to really put on the cost side of this, load it as conservatively as we can. So we felt like that's a fair assumption, given that you may or may not consider a CRA, but if you were to consider it to the full extent, this is the level that potentially could be generated from that. Any questions on tax increment? Yeah?
You mentioned the seventy-five percent, and that's kind of the buy-in from each of these entities, correct?
Yeah.
So that's assuming that each of the entities will approve that.
Right.
Because each of them has a yes or no vote, based on our board, to approve that or disapprove that.
Yeah.
So we all have a point, like especially the school district, for example. It takes a lot for them to approve something like this.
Yeah.
So...
Absolutely a critical point that you've made, and I think why I wanted to point out that this was a key assumption is it's a conservative assumption from the perspective of, well, is this a benefit to you? We've tried to stretch it to the furthest point of what cost would be, but we also recognize that the CRA may not be approved by other taxing entities. In some cases, it's not property tax that's used. In some cases, there's actually sales tax, incremental sales tax that is used to fund a CRA. For our purposes of fiscal analysis, we didn't necessarily look at specifically the sales tax, but we do recognize there is adequate sales tax that's being generated within the project area. So from the cost benefit side, we've kind of loaded up the costs, but it may be paid a different way, or it may have to be carried by the developer, it may have to be carried by a combination of using this tool or other tools that might help to pay for that. But TIF is a very common tool used in these types of projects. The four other comparable Smith's marketplace projects that we use, each of them had a TIF component, some smaller than others, but they all had some portion of a TIF that was associated with it. And most of it was water or sewer or roads, some public infrastructure element that was funded through it. So where does that leave us, I guess? Where does that direct us to, based on those assumptions, based on the various components of employment, the amount of gross taxable sales that we would anticipate, et cetera? What really is then the net impact? And so we look at this from both a revenue perspective, benefits versus a cost perspective. And so table E one, the first one, is really each of those individual entities and how much revenue is generated over that same time period. Now, the revenue for the city includes a very small property tax portion, sales tax, and municipal energy tax. Those are the revenue sources that the city would have. The county would have property tax, sales tax, and those would be the primary sources for that. Whereas the state of Utah, they don't levy a property tax, they have income tax and sales tax. And so those gross numbers, you can see, is the eighty-four million, and that's over that twenty-five year period. Using a four percent discount rate, that will be the equivalent of, well, what is that eighty-four dol- eighty-four million dollars mean to us in terms of today's dollar value? That's the forty-seven point four million. Then you can see the impact side of it is in E two, the table below, which is the cost of services and the tax increment. So recall from an earlier slide, we estimated that Hooper's overall cost to provide services was going to be six point eight million. That's reflected there. Lieber County's about three point three, and then the state of Utah, fifty-three point one. And then you have a corresponding net present value table as well. So what's the net impact? That's where the very top chart, if you will, points out that the net benefit over cost, after you take into account all of those things, cost of this sewer lift station, the cost of providing public safety, public works, et cetera, is still a net benefit of twenty-one point five million dollars over that time period. And then it's broken out down below for each of those entities. Hooper, city specifically, your revenues, I mentioned property tax, sales tax, energy tax. Your expenses are the tax increment, public safety, public works, general government, parks and recreation, and the net fiscal benefit in this case is seven point seven million. Lieber County is much smaller, as I mentioned before, but they provide a lot less in terms of services to that project area or to the residential population. In their case, it's a net fiscal benefit of one point nine million. And then the state is eleven point nine million. That makes up the, that's how we get to the total of the twenty-one point five million. So more than half of the fiscal benefit comes to the state of Utah. However, a good portion, as you'll recall, does flow through to the city of Hooper in this case. And that's seven point seven million, not to the same extent that the state benefits, but certainly more in this case than the county benefits. So let me just pause one more time and maybe some conclusions and then open it up to some additional questions or comments. But we were asked specifically, and these are the two questions that are really addressed in here, we were asked first and foremost, does this project make sense for the city to consider from a fiscal perspective? And our conclusion was that, yes, the proposed Smith's marketplace, the mixed-use retail, and also the residential components of this, based on just the fiscal net benefit that's created for the city and the other taxing entities, yes, it proves to be economically viable, financially viable. And if that's the only lens that you're looking through, then it would make sense to consider a zone change here and to do this project. The second element that we noted is the creation of a community reinvestment area, so a project area for tax increment financing. We believe that there is some extraordinary costs, off-site costs relative to the sewer lift station. Whether or not the CRA would be used to cover the full amount or just a part of it, it was not purviewed, if you will, under our analysis, but it was purviewed from the overall cost and the capital markets in terms of addition to the fifty-plus million dollars that would have to be constructed, financed, and developed. You'd have this additional off-site cost of three million dollars, which would have an impact on the capital, you know, structure. So we did determine that tax increment made sense to look at, and even though it's included, even that didn't tip the scales to suggest that this was not a fiscal benefit, overall benefit to the city. And so that's our conclusion. There's volumes of information, I think, that's in the report itself, but now I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, and see if there's any additional questions that I could respond to.
Thank you. Council, do you have questions you would like to ask Mr. Brayham?
I have one question, and we probably weren't able to extract this information, but were you able to, at that lift station, it's a two, three million dollar component, what's the longevity of it? Were you able to assess the maintenance cost on that? Is that built into here or is that something that is just a question mark?
No, it's, we do have the footnote. The way we looked at that particular improvement is we didn't look at it as a general fund cost item. We did look at it as a utility, meaning that you would most likely be paying for that out of your utility fees. So yes, there is an operation component of that, and we did determine that that would be built into your user fees, and we would think that, you know, it would have some bearing on what the user rates would be through the community, but not specific to how much of a rate increase, if any, would be suggested, but we do anticipate that there would be operational costs associated with that, and ratepayers would be the primary source to repay that.
So I have a question. Ultimately, on a TIF or CRA, who ends up paying that back?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of questions maybe unbundled in that. I think in terms of initially who pays the property tax, I think would be a good place to start. What we're talking about in tax increment financing is taxes that are going to be paid anyway. So this isn't a new tax. It isn't like this project area has an additional tax rate in addition to the tax rate they already have. It would just be part and parcel to what your certified tax rate is, meaning the cities, the counties, the school district. And so it's really more of a diversion of those tax revenues as opposed to new revenues. So who pays those? Well, it would be the residents. It would be the hundred and seventeen units would pay a portion of that. It would also be the hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet of retail, but it would not be outside of that project area. So if that's the question of, well, who pays for the benefit of those sewer improvements? In the case of a tax increment district, it's really just those forty-six acres that would be paying that. Now, you can create separate agreements, potentially you would even consider with the developer a reimbursement agreement or some type of a pioneering agreement where the developer would pay it all upfront, and then if there are other beneficiaries that benefit from it after, they would pay a fee that then could defray both the cost of the tax increment or the cost, you know, to the developer. And that's very common to do. But if the question was, we're concerned of, does the rest of the residents have to pay for that infrastructure to support this project? The TIF is a mechanism to not do that. The TIF is very specific to doing it on the development that's created that would be paying for the improvement. The second part of that question, which I'm inferring from her question, might be whose tax revenue is that? And in the case of tax increment, what our assumptions, and I think Mr. Hill made a point of this, is that it's, the city is a very, very small fraction of the overall property tax that's collected. Really, the biggest portion is going to be the school district, and next is going to be the county, and then you have fire districts and other districts. So the revenue, although paid by the development, paid by property owners and the commercial development, when it goes to the CRA, that passes through from the other taxing entities, and the biggest portion of that would come from the school district. So hopefully, I adequately answered that question.
I have two questions. The state legislature is toyed with the idea of taking away sales tax on food. I mean, all this is a grocery store, and that's where a lot of the sales tax is generated from, the sale of groceries. From my understanding, there's two components to the sales tax. There's a local option and the state option. If the state opts to do away with their portion of the sales tax on food, would that directly affect the state revenues only, or does that add an effect on local revenue?
It would just impact the state revenues, and most of the dialogue right now in terms of removing it from food is on the state level. There are some additional issues that are somewhat difficult. I won't go into all the difficulties relative to removing sales tax from food, but local government, municipal government, use the issuance of sales tax revenue bonds to support a lot of their infrastructure costs, whereas the state of Utah uses general obligation bonds. Basically, they're authorized by the legislature to a certain amount. Although they don't levy a property tax, they can use any general fund revenues to pay those bonds back, but they don't specifically pledge sales tax. So in their case, removing it from the state level, they don't impair bondholders, if that makes sense. So the state can kind of do what they want relative to the sales tax because it's not a pledged collateral. Cities, however, of the two hundred and forty-some odd cities, there's at least probably fifty percent of those cities that have sales tax revenue bonds in place that protect bondholders, and it's a pledge of the sales tax, and a big component of that is food. And so if the state were to remove that, there's also a clause, the state would have to, non-imperment is what the clause is called, so they couldn't impair your ability, so they'd have to make it up somehow else. They'd have to either raise the one percent to a new level so that you would have revenue neutral, so it's not on food, or they'd have to come up with another mechanism to hold bondholders harmless. That's a non-imperment issue. But what's talked about mostly is the state's portion.
My other question was, this last page, appendix B, that talks about the net present value analysis. Could you explain that to us? Because I know we're looking at the numbers here over the twenty-five year period... over the 25-year period, it gives Hooper City a net of $4.3 million compared to this 21.5 we're talking about in the fiscal analysis. Can you explain the difference on that?
Certainly. That's an important clarification as well. I think in each of the models, and I think for the benefit of those that are watching as well, let me just focus on Hooper specifically, but it relates to what your question is. All of our tables and all of the analysis that you'll see in your packet does include what we call a net present value analysis. And you can see in, there's two columns here. Total, which I would say is future value, meaning that's the total amount of revenues and expenses over that 25-year period. And then, what net present value analysis is intended to do is to try to put it back in today's dollars. Meaning, if I gave you $14 million today, that would be worth $14 million to you today, correct? But if I gave you $14 million, but I spanned that over 25 years, and I give you a million here and a million there, and over that 25 years, that $14 million doesn't have the buying power of $14 million. In our case, it would only have the buying power of $8 million. It's a method, if you will, to bring it back to today's terms so that you don't have these overly inflated numbers that you say, well, that's hard for us to get our arms kind of around that. That's where we use the net present value to say, in today's terms, it's really, although it's 7.7 million over 25 years, it's really the equivalent of only about $4.3 million if we discounted it at 4%. And the same applies to this 21.5 million is really only $11.8 million, so.
So, that's, in lack of a better term, that's the reality number?
Yeah, to me, that's.
That's the inflation.
Yeah, that's really taking the idea of inflation out of it and trying to bring everything in today's costs and say, you know, if I have to wait 25 years to get 21 million, is that really worth it to me? So, we try to put it in the context that, well, no, it's really the equivalent of you are getting, you know, 7.7 million, but it really only has buying power to you of about $4.3 million. And the same for the, you know, the county and the state. So, it's a better reflection in my mind of, well, what is reality? Is this really something we want to pursue? Because you could, in some of these cases, you could be back-end loaded, meaning all of your revenue could be deferred out long. Let's say that you use tax increment and included sales tax, municipal energy tax, and all of that was diverted upfront, but you also have the costs upfront. But then, your revenue's deferred out long. You might have, you might have the same total value of numbers in terms of revenue and expense, but when you put that through the net present value, it might be a negative. So, that's why we try to look at it over that spectrum of time and try to put it back into today's dollars. And so, that's really a common method for fiscal and economic impact. But I think that's a good way to describe it. Okay, that's the reality of, is this a positive or is this going to drain us?
I have one more question. Councilmember Marigoni and Ramazin. So, Hooper County in our last, in a meeting last August, said that because we have such a small portion of property tax, that probably initially, we would have to put some of our, put the sales tax towards the CRA if we went that way? Is this still a possibility?
It is, it is. Councilmember, you probably can't see the screen.
I can't.
Okay, I'm pointing to a slide that is specific to Hooper and the $7.7 million positive net fiscal impact. And I was just going to illustrate, that's a significant number, even if, to the point I think she's making is, there may not be property tax participation, or it must, or it may be a lot lower, which means maybe what would be asked of the city is to put some of its sales tax as a portion of trying to get this contribution or get the infrastructure financed. My comment would be that there's a fairly significant gap so that if you did defer a little bit of sales tax, you would still have a net positive. I haven't tried to suggest negotiating, you know, with the county or the school district, but I think that's the point that would be made, is you do get a fair amount of sales tax here. Pointed out, you know, the risk of sales tax is, well, what if you remove it from food, you know? All of those risk components are here. But the fact that it's 7.7 million over the life of that suggests to me that you have some wiggle room potentially to use sales tax. And to answer your question, yes, it can be included in the CRA, and you can use both. The city could use one source, the county could use another source, the school district could use another source, all of which is negotiable. Different percentages, length of time, all of those things could be negotiated. And what we would recommend, obviously, is that we really narrow in on the cost of this improvement. Then, we also determine if there are other ways in which to pay for it, i.e. impact fees, future impact fees, et cetera, that might come back. And then, you'd structure the CRA around what revenue do you need from there? But if sales tax were to be used, it would change the 7.7 million down. But I think there's adequate capacity to still consider that and have a net benefit here.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Oh, I do have, I do have one more. I'm sorry, because I'm not real good with numbers and that. So, and what would the city expect, oh, each year? Because I can't see the numbers. What would the city be able to expect each year as a net over the 25-year period?
Yeah, Malcolm, would you be able to pull up the spreadsheet?
And I actually just did a quick calculation. If you take 7.7 million, you divide that by the 25 years, it comes to $308,000 a year.
Yeah, well, you should divide it by the 4.3. Yeah, the 4.3, but yeah.
Yeah.
Our thought was, it also grows.
It also grows. So, if it stated only that, it would be that, but it could grow as well.
Right.
Okay, so around $300,000 a year?
Yeah, I would say it's more around probably $150,000 to begin with, and it might grow up to $400,000, $450,000. And then, when you take into account the net present value of that, it would be deducted accordingly. Obviously, closer you are to the period of time we are, the less discount that you would take from that cash flow.
Okay, thank you.
That was a question I had as well, and we talked about this this staff. It was on page 39, and it talks about net cash flows. And it starts in 2025, and I don't know if that sheet will show up there or not. And I could be reading this incorrectly, but it looked to me like in 2025, when it comes to net cash flows, the city is actually in the negative by $10,000. Am I reading that right?
Exactly right.
So, we're in the negative. The city is in 2025 at $10,384, and in 2026, the city goes to a negative of $33,644. In 2027, we're in a negative of $56,909. And then, once the Smiths is completed, if we go that direction, then you start to see the net positive. But prior to that, we are in the negative.
Very astute, and that's exactly right. And as I point out, I know it's hard to visualize this, but what you just talked about is exactly right. What you would anticipate is costs probably before the revenues. So, during the construction phase of Smiths itself, there will be some benefit in terms of the jobs created during construction, sales tax that will be spent in the community, and so forth. But property tax is not a main generator for you, but it is for other taxing entities. And so, that's really in arrears, if you will. The costs come before you get property taxes. Sales tax would catch up when you actually get in the ground and so forth. So, I should mention that there are assumptions made in terms of absorption. So, the residential, by virtue of what the developer gave us in terms of their timeframe of building the 117 units, and we did look at the market relative to that and whether or not they thought they could absorb it within the four or five years. And we determined, yes, there is a market for that. We heard in housing storage and the price points that they're talking about would be absorbed. But it is front-end loaded. With residential, you get the Smiths kind of with that same timeframe, and then, the retail kind of comes as you get a little more mature in terms of that overall retail marketplace. And so, you're absolutely right. That's why I was trying to say, there's, you know, overall, net present value, net benefit, fiscal benefit. Early on, if some of those other uses aren't built and don't come to, you know, don't come, then there is potentially a gap relative to the cost of the residential units. And maybe the easiest way to describe it is, commercial pays probably more than its share, and residential typically pays a little less than what the cost of services. And so, we balance that with building a tax base around office and retail, et cetera. And that's, you know, a fate, an issue that all communities face at some point of, can you just make fiscal budgets work just on residential? And it's difficult without a tax base, even more so without a property tax or a higher property tax. And so, one of the reasons we looked at this and evaluated and said this is kind of ideal is, one, your general plan is very much in stride with this, meaning it's said that selective locations and corridors, we need retail, not only for the benefit and welfare of our residents, but we need economic tax base. We need the ability to continue to provide services to residents. And that really is the case here. So, caution, if I could, is always residential projects upfront that don't materialize into commercial can be a risk to the city and the community. Where you can, you know, my guess is the Smiths will be locked up at the same time that the residential is, but the other retail could take a little bit of time to absorb based on the market.
I know that you had mentioned you had compared other tax increment financing with the other local Smiths. Was there any comparison as far as the net income to those cities? So, as far as other, you know, Smiths or even other grocery stores as far as their impact on cities with their, having the impact?
Yeah, I think that's a good question, probably not specifically analyzed. I can tell you anecdotal that each of them that I did mention had tax increment financing as part of it. I don't recall that any of them had $3 million necessarily of tax increment that was used for public infrastructure. They were more in the lines of $1 million and a half, $2 million, something along those lines.
Any other, any other question?
I have a question.
Let me ask, counsel, how do you, we really, this is not a public hearing. Yeah, so, we're really not opening it up to questions at this time. So, any other questions?
I think we should mention that they should feel free. That they should feel free to contact their council member with any questions they have.
Yeah, they're asking, are, we are having a planning commission meeting that we originally hadn't said that you were coming back to the planning commission meeting. We've already had a public hearing that we did mention in our work meeting on this. So, maybe.
I'm happy to consider another time if there's a venue that you'd like to consider in terms of addressing, you know, community questions, et cetera. I know that wasn't, we kind of went back and forth on, you know, how this would look, but I'm certainly willing and able to make myself available if that's a desired path to go.
Okay, so, yeah, we can, we can discuss that and get back with you. So, okay, any other questions from city council that you have?
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your time. And this study was in the packet. And so, for all of you residents that, maybe some of this is the first time that you've seen it, go to hoopercity.com. If you go into government, under agendas, you go to tonight's agenda, you will see the packet. And it is, I believe, 42 pages, I think, long, somewhere in there. But it gives you a lot of good information, and I appreciate your explanations. I've gone through and made some questions, but I feel like you gave us those answers, so thank you. Okay, the next thing we have on our agenda then is discussion and then possibly a motion from Roy City. Is there someone here from Roy City that has come to do that presentation?
They do the Park 43 housing.
Okay, we'll turn the time over to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate the time that you guys have taken to listen to us. We're with Advanced Homes, we're the developer for Park 43 that is located wholly in Roy City. Oh, yeah, Pete Smith. Bless the mind. We've developed the townhomes on 4300 West in Roy City. Part of that development includes an open space on the west side of the slough. As you can see, it is currently zoned through Roy City as single-family homes. So, it's approved for the single-family homes to be on the west side of the slough, given access. What we've looked at is some challenges with the slough. Obviously, it comes down to utility access. And so, what we have, in our review of the site, have seen that the closest connections are in Hooper City. So, really, what our request is, is access to Hooper City Sewer and Water for those three single-family homes. All of the water connections, the plan would be to stay within Hooper City along the curb line so that maybe your employees wouldn't have to cross those lines to get to those and have long services to those. And then, the sewer would be installed in a public utility easement down the private lane. Fairly simple request, and some of our first requests looking at it in terms of close access. To us, we'd see that as a benefit to Hooper City in providing additional services, utilizing the space in a way that's amenable to what has been discussed. We came into this project after, we're not the original planner, developer, and we came in and took over the project from the previous developer after it had been annexed into Roy City and through most of the planning portion of that. And so, we had just seen the property there. We have a large amount of open space. Part of Roy's requirement is that we have to maintain a 25% minimum open usable space in the overall development. And so, that's how we're looking to try and incorporate that and maintain the open space. Part of that development also has extended the trail system that comes through the Hooper City property adjacent to the north of our development and continues it down through so that it could be continued over to 5500 South and connect to the other trail systems as well. And so, that's our sample. We've talked with some of your utility offices, and they have recommended we come to you to present and seek your approval upfront on that connection process. Part of that is that Roy wants it. We provided a couple of pictures and renderings of what we intend to build. This is from a project we constructed in Gainesville City. These are actually duplexes, but for the zoning of it, they're about 3,000 square feet, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath. What we have seen, and so, we've provided some floor plans for that just to give you a rough idea of what we intend. They have limited footprints to maintain setbacks and the open space requirements. Part of what we looked at with this is that it doesn't provide any additional impact to that circle other than what we. to that circle other than would be in a normal construction environment. We tried to keep that number down to where if you looked at that circle, there's space based on the lot sizes there that would accommodate three additional houses on that circle. So trying to minimize our impact overall. In a nutshell, that's kind of what we're looking for. So are there any questions you have for us related to that utility access?
Just looking at that property off of 55 South going to the north, there's a piece of land there, and then there's a vinyl fence, and then another piece of property before the roundabout.
Going.
Going north.
On the circle, I guess, just maybe a point. So, so here?
So the circle, yeah, and then coming to the south. It seems like there's a piece of property in there, there's a vinyl fence.
The vinyl fence here?
Is that, is it right there?
So this is our vinyl fence that we put up for the development. We also fenced the backside as well. If you, if you look at that, oh, perfect, thank you. If you look at, this will be easier. Okay. If you look at this area here, this is where the existing gate is in the property to the existing drive that's been there for quite some time. It doesn't show well on this plan just because of the size of it overall for planning purposes, but the sidewalk and a portion of the park strip actually do cross the property line now and exist on an easement that's in place. And so we do directly abut to that. Obviously, you would have some vehicular traffic that would come into that space. It's a, we're not looking to modify that roadway whatsoever. Realistically, we would see we need the permit process through Hooper City for that sewer connection and the water connections to be able to set those meters. And then an agreement with the city in order to provide those services to those homeowners on a long-term basis. All of the garbage and plowing for that development are handled within the HOA that handles the rest of the development. And so those services continue to be provided by the HOA.
One question that I have, as far as impact fees, will those be paid to Roy because this is Roy?
So obviously, we would have a portion that would be paid to Roy, but I would assume that there would be some connection fee associated with our connection to Hooper Sewer, as well as providing a public utility easement for that sewer to feed down that private lane in order to connect to the individual houses.
Yes, that was one question I had. Of course, the sewer fees would be paid to Hooper City because it's our city, but additional to that, the taxes would be paid to Roy.
That's correct.
And so if there was any additional expanse to Hooper City, Hooper would really not be getting any of that because that would go to Roy with, they would be paying their taxes to Roy.
They would. The impact there truly is just the utilities and that road access to it. So you have, you have a circle that's there already that the existing homeowners utilize. It's part of why we looked at our density on that and not adding more units there. Too full, I know that the multifamily being that far back was an issue in the initial process of the development, which is why Roy came back and approved it as single-family only on the west side of the slough.
I know with some other properties along 4300, we've had, that property along 4300 is interesting between Roy and Hooper. You do have some properties that are on the west side of the road that are Roy, and we also have some properties on the east side of the road that are Hooper properties.
There are.
And in the past, when residents that were on the, in the Hooper residence that have wanted to get sewer because there's not sewer if you extend further north on 4300, they had been told by Roy they would have to annex into Roy in order to be able to hook into that sewer. So I guess my question is then, you know, I always, I don't mean to sound like a greedy mayor, but I always look at what is the benefit to Hooper? If we're going to agree to something for Hooper and we are being stewards over Hooper, then what would be the benefit to Hooper to have us do this? Because I think if it was on the other side, Roy would probably require it to be annexed. And I'm not saying that Hooper necessarily would want you to annex, but is that a possibility of you, if that was something you would annex?
It's definitely something we've considered. Obviously, this is kind of our first steps in it in what has already been planned and approved. We have entertained other options for this that create complications and struggles for that. And so obviously, our initial is to come to you and ask for, for that connection fee. To us, we'd assume that you would be making, that you have some margin in your services you're providing to those, however minimal, and those would continue to be paid by the residents directly to Hooper. So that would be part of that agreement would be a shared utility agreement that would allow those, allow you to bill those homeowners and whatever connection fees that come with that as those changeover, as well as whatever the permitting fees would be related to setting up those utilities on your system.
I agree with the mayor. I mean, I always think what's the long-term benefit to Hooper City? You know, aside from the sewer monthly fee that we get, I don't see any other benefit. So my recommendation would be to ask for a city about annexation as well, because that's the opinion they have with us.
Understand. No, we understand. It's, it's an interesting piece of property from the beginning. All, it technically all has Hooper City as if, really. It's all serviced by Hooper Post Office. Do I get her touching out? No, that's ultimately the presentation, and so if that's the recommendation that we came to present based on recommendation from your staff to come and present it to you as an initial step. And so that's really what we're looking for is what, what you're looking for us to do to accommodate this.
So what questions, see council, do you have? This, on our agenda is a discussion and a motion. So are there questions that you, that you have for them?
I'd just like to say that I agree with Ryan as far as what he said, and that's the path that I follow.
If there's no other discussion, is there someone on the council then that would like to make a motion concerning this? Yeah.
I don't know that necessarily needs a motion. It was a discussion point, but we were told to come for a discussion to address it and then see what you needed to have happen.
And then maybe that could be something that you would go back. There are some criteria with this. Hooper doesn't currently allow private roads, and the width of your road does not fit in with our ordinance.
Understand.
So there would be, if this is agreed to annex into Hooper, there's going to have to be some modifications done with this, with this plan.
Understand. I think things to remember there as we look at this is that part of this would lock that property up for further expansion to the south. It would lock in that circle as it is. The current easement has some adjustments to it that would potentially have impacts that continue the property to the south as in Roy as well, where the gas station is, as well as the piece to the west of it. And so obviously, we looked at our initial steps on how to, to make this work, and we appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next on our agenda then are citizen comments. This can be, and one that would like to come up, and you are allotted three minutes. And if you will come up and state your name, and this is for something that is not on the agenda.
All right. We might put them on these. It's just the previous agendas. Sure you can all guess what I'm here to talk about again.
Will you state your name, please?
Jake Kelso, Hooper resident. I'd like to once again ask that citizen comment be restored to the agenda. Sherry took it upon herself to remove the agenda, removing an item that was added after discussion by the council. Thank you. Sherry would not remove or block items added by the council if she had any respect to the council. Sherry has shown complete disrespect to the council by removing and blocking agenda items. She's shown a complete lack of willingness and transparency, or for transparency and open dialogue with Hooper residents by preventing citizen comment before agenda items are motioned on. Citizen comment was added to the beginning of the agenda, February 6, 2020, with the note that you could only discuss agenda items, which is completely reasonable. They also kept citizen comment at the end. Later wording was added that you could not discuss agenda items at the end, which again is completely reasonable because you already had an opportunity to discuss agenda items prior to the motions. I'm again asking that citizen comment be restored to the beginning of the agenda. I would also like to suggest that the council creates an ordinance that would prevent the mayor from removing or blocking agenda items added by the council. And I had some things from the packet that I read, because I did read the packet, that I wanted to discuss, but I still can't.
Okay, thank you. And as we've addressed, I believe, in two meetings already as recommendations from our attorney, if we allow citizen comments at the beginning of the meeting, every meeting becomes a public hearing. We follow the same, excuse me, sir, you are allowed to talk.
That was a good and not legal advice.
Well.
It's true.
Yeah, yes, that is what our attorney has recommended, and we follow the same as planning commission. If you look at the planning commission agendas, they also have that at the end. Is there any other citizen comments?
I have a comment as a council member, if I may quickly. What can we do to allow citizens participating discussion about the agenda so that they feel that they have a say?
And an answer, because I've thought about that as well. I was one, as I said at the beginning, I had citizen comments at the beginning and was given the recommendation that then it does create everyone. All of, all of us up here were elected by you, and what we want you to do is to reach out to your city council members, to myself. I am a member of the city council. I just serve as mayor and chairman. Reach out to us and give us your opinions of what you would, how you would like us to represent you. And the same with your planning commission members. Reach out to them and let them know how you would like to be represented. So, okay, go ahead.
Amber Kelso. For over three years, I have been closely, I've followed closely what has been going on in our city, and it breaks my heart to see what is being allowed to happen. I want to speak out in defense of my sister, Amanda France, who has served on the planning commission with dedication for several years now. She is well-known for being well-spoken, for doing countless hours of research, and for standing for truth and ethical practice. She loves Hooper and believes in the citizens' rights and has fought to protect them. Those who've been following know that my sister has been an advocate and asset for the citizens of Hooper, and the only people who would endeavor to silence her are those who seek unethical personal gain or who are consumed with vengeance, so much so that no moral compass remains. What is being allowed to happen to Amanda right now is no short of criminal, and yet ironically, the justice system is being weaponized against her. I believe this is a clear orchestrated attempt to control and silence those who may not agree with the mayor's agenda. To have Mayor Bingham deciding anything regarding this situation is 100% conflict of interest. It is my belief that we have someone in our city government who is using their position of power to deliberately target other public officials who do not agree with them or whom they have a personal vendetta against. There is no limit to how low this individual and their family will stoop or how dishonest they will be. The constant harassment and bullying of the council and commission is unreal, and honestly, I don't know how many in this room sleep at night. I wonder how much of the taxpayers' money, resources, and time has and will be spent chasing Mayor Bingham's enemies. Our mayor says often that she is concerned about taxpayer dollars, yet I wonder how many taxpayer dollars have been squandered by utilizing our attorney and other resources for her personal agendas. This is something every citizen should be striving to look into. To the Hooper residents who are listening or whom we listen to in the future, I want it to be known on the record that we have a mayor who is unwilling to listen to the voice of the people. She has taken public comment off of the agenda. She has run interference with the planning commission trying to set up meetings with public comment and surveys regarding upcoming development. I believe that is one reason that the council is attempting to ensure the rights of the commission to be able to do their job. She is not transparent, which is evidenced by the closed-door meetings she conducted with the developer over the Smiths project, asking council members to come where they were asked to give their commitment outside of the public eye. Our mayor will stop at nothing to go after her perceived deployments, and I do mean nothing, and that includes a willingness to abuse her power. It's despicable, and Hooper citizens should be outraged. What I stand here today and say can be verified if you are willing to look into it and ask. I would encourage all to do so, regardless of what direction you think Hooper should go. Things in our government should be carried out with transparency and ethically. I had a good mom growing up. She taught me to always stand up and speak out for the right, and that's how I find myself standing here today. I hope others will stand too.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments?
My name is Sean Tomura. Most of you city council members would think I don't have a right to talk because my mom was elected as mayor. I didn't run for mayor, but I expect to be protected as a citizen. We have a city, a planning commission member who physically assaulted a member of our community, and because it is a relative of the mayor, you don't care. So am I, I'm not safe in this meeting. Any one of you could physically assault me, and it does not matter. Does that extend to my children? Does it extend to your children? Because a public, because a family member chooses to run, their family member should not be able to be attacked, and you don't even allow for time for an investigation. It was serious enough that the Roy City police recommended it to go to the prosecutor. It wasn't dropped by the police, it was recommended to the prosecutor. And you don't even allow time. It is not fair to the victim. It is not fair to the rest of Hooper City. If you have a planning commission member who cannot hold her temper when confronted by a public member, that isn't okay, and it shouldn't matter what relation that is to the mayor. It shouldn't. We do have a big problem in this city. And most of what Amber has addressed about going after enemies is what she is doing and what the people that fight for her are doing. But somewhere there needs to be some semblance of order in the city, and somewhere there is protected. So if there is a time to allow for investigation, city council should not be bowling through that. It is not fair. I don't usually come to city council, but I don't feel safe. Councilman Maragoni says she doesn't feel safe, but she's never been physically assaulted. Something needs to be done.
Hold on. I did get word from the city prosecutor and Roy during the meeting day that they will be in charge.
The next thought, we, we don't do that. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Yeah, I got one. Please, every resident in the room. So with the recent storms, I've noticed as I drove through the city that there's quite a few vehicles, trailers, and such on the side of the road. And it come to my attention that either I missed the memo or I didn't know we had a trailer lot right there by the pickleball court. So I'm wondering, can anybody park their trailers there to get them off the road or get them out of the driveway? What's the rule or what has the council decided with that trailer lot that's east of the pickleball courts? Just wondering, because I got plenty of trailers I would love to get out of the, off the side of the road, and I know my neighbor's got three or four as well, so anyway.
Okay, thank you. We will look into that. Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing no other public comments, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, are we in favor? I, okay, we are going to ask, based on things that have happened in the past, if all residents would please leave the Hooper City property, and after everyone has left, then the city council will leave as well. Thank you. Thank you.